Item 10D, receive an oral report on the city's progress and results regarding sanitary, sewer maintenance and operation.
Mr. Mayor, while they're getting seated, I just wanted to follow up on the last item and let you know that we have another item coming forward on your next agenda that is a similarly interesting story about a water feature or a water facility that we have recently completed construction on. So we will plan to do a similar presentation for you. But I also wanted to let you know that those two projects, Water Tank Number Three, the Olympic Pump Station, and now the relatively long ago completed College Water Pump Station, have all been completed within the last several months. And we'll be asking you soon to identify a date when we can take a little tour around the city and dedicate those facilities that we're very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, you're on.
I'm on. Oh, thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of council, I'm very proud to be here tonight to present to you some of our enhancements, some of our improvements, and some of our success regarding our wastewater division, especially in light of the very positive comments and congratulations we received recently during a Baykeeper meeting that we had, I think, three weeks ago. I wanted to work with Dennis Bosch, who's here with me tonight, help share with you the many improvements, successful programs, and ongoing efforts we have in the wastewater division. During tonight's presentation, Dennis, who's our wastewater services manager, and I will be, he will begin by providing an overview of the operational changes and adjustments to our maintenance practices and provide some details about how these improvements have led to ongoing reduction in SSOs and explain a little bit about our enhanced capability that we now have, that we've been building for, that he's been building, that they've been building over the past few years. I'll go through our SSOs by the numbers and provide a little bit of a historical perspective, discuss where we're at. We'll provide an update for our point-of-sale program that Dennis is in charge of and administers on a day-to-day basis. We'll also go through our sewer lateral warranty partnership, which, as you might know, many of our residents have received letters this week. We also have some handouts up at the counter, but we'll go through a little bit of the highlights of that program and provide some information for those who are watching tonight. And with that, I will turn it over to Dennis.
I'm going to jump in here because I was going to say something at the very beginning, and then Dennis will speak in just a moment. The City Council doubtless remembers that in 2009, we received a kind of a double whammy bad news from the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Baykeepers Organization when we were put into the situation of needing to work towards settlement of a lawsuit with the Baykeepers and an enforcement action by the regional board having to do with a somewhat bad history of our aged wastewater system, springing leaks and creating sanitary sewer overflows at a rate that was caught the notice of both the regional board and the Baykeepers. The presentation tonight, as Jim just indicated, comes on the heels of a meeting with the Baykeepers that, as he indicated, we had three weeks ago. We, part of our agreement with the Baykeepers calls for an annual report to them, and we have complied with that requirement. That agreement was entered in 2010. So we've provided a number of annual reports, and we have stepped through a number of improvements that Dennis and Jim are going to talk about a little bit further tonight. But the meeting was unusually positive, surprisingly positive, in that the Baykeepers not only expressed appreciation and congratulations for the good work that the city has done, but they also asked for our advice on a number of issues, that they would like to be able to take advantage of some of the things that we've done as providing information and education to some of their other people they work with, other people that they've sued, and as best practice. And so we were, of course, happy to share information with them and actually quite proud to be able to be recognized, not only as having complied with the letter of the agreement, but having made such good progress that we come onto their radar screen as a very capable and collaborative and good-performing agency. So with that, Dennis is going to give you a little bit of an overview of the operations, and then the presentation will continue, and we'd be happy to take any of your questions when we finish.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. In tune with what Councilperson O'Connell said, I'm happy tonight to not necessarily show up and just ask for something for either some machinery and the hundreds of thousands of dollars, but in tune with what she said, this is, this is our way of saying what you've given us and what the money has done for us and for you. So with that, I'll start with some operational changes and improvements. In reaction to the consent decree and cease and desist order, and in a constant effort to become better, our first operational change was the construction of our first-ever electronic sewer maps. Up to the, up to the point in 2011 and maybe a year beforehand, all we had was a paper map on a wall, and we would write things in as either we uncovered things or we found things. What we did is each, each mainline segment, once we created these maps, was given an identification number, and it was given a form of cleaning, whether it be hydrojetting, mechanical rotting, or chemical root foaming. Once we gave it a type of cleaning, we decided to, we sat down with myself and the crew and said, "What do we know about these pipes? How often does this one segment that's bad need to be cleaned?" Once we figured that out, we installed all this information into our maintenance management system. And once it was put in there, into that system, it was controlled on how often it would come up, and the system spits it out in a work order system, saying, "Hey, this line segment is due to be cleaned." The positive effect of this is that we now have maps to help for long-range CIP planning, staff has the ability to check where things are just to verify for upcoming projects, and each of our cleaning programs is now guaranteed to be carried out by the heartbeat of our system and what I refer to to describe it as the CMMS brain clock. That same CMMS system that controls our cleaning programs also helps us to make cleaning cycle changes, stores response information from house calls, which leads to better customer service, and stores other historical system information for our crews so that they can be best armed with the most up-to-date info to make better decisions in the field. When a crew member comes along and they clean a line and they find something, they find a bad spot, let's say at 15 feet, they write it in the work order, next time it comes up, six months, a year later, three years, they said, "Hey, watch out, there's a bad spot at X amount of feet." In response to the newly adjusted cleaning programs, we made intelligent equipment purchases to support and deliver our programs. We replaced one hydrojetter truck with limited capabilities. You can see the picture behind us. The truck that we had could only clean a line, it couldn't extract the sewer debris from the sewer lines. So we turned that into a vector truck, and now we have two, as you can see, that can do maintenance and respond to SSOs and capture sewage. This right here was actually at a forced main break on Crestwood Drive. Both vehicles worked through the night, and they lessen the amount of overall gallons spilled. Next slide. Here is another slide where we had an SSO up off of Rollingwood and Crestwood Drive. This is on the side of 280, where sewage had exited a manhole and came down on the side of the road, and our crews are coned off and capturing as much sewage as possible. Next slide. What we've also done is we've installed inline grinders before the wet wells and the pump stations. Director Tandon mentioned, as part of the Olympic Pump Station rebuild, we installed different machinery, and this was also in start as part of that, part of that build program. This grinder is put in line before a wet well to stop anything that can be flushed down a toilet that could get in and jam a sewage pump. Basically, it's a grinder. It grinds anything that you can imagine. We've seen two-by-fours, rugs, anything, pagers, cell phones, everything that could possibly fall into a toilet and eventually make it to our pump station. That grinder was brought before the council about four years ago for the Crestwood Pump Station. We were pulling up the pumps twice a week. Once we, once we installed that, we haven't had to, we haven't had a jam pump since. That was, from what I remember, in the area of $62,000. Another thing that we bought is our emergency bypass pump. This was on, again, on Crestwood Drive from a rain event. The sewage was overflowing due to the amount of rainwater that got into the system. This pump was out here for three days straight. It stopped the SSO. And every gallon that we stopped from spilling is a gallon that we're not responsible or could be fined from the Water Quality Board and/or Baykeepers. We've also used that to first-ever complete wet well maintenance where we can bypass a sewage station totally. We were never able to do that before. And again, before the Canes project that was completed, the Sewer Man on Canes, it was also out there for three days straight with staff, manning it 24 hours a day, stopping SSOs happening from the rain. Next slide. And then our last purchase, and I call it our lifesaver, is our CCTV truck. For the past, as long as the city's out of sewer system, we're flying blind. We now use this to verify videos that were done by the previous contractor. We're going in and we're using it as emergency situations in the sense of our crews either get stuck in a line with a hose or they feel a bad spot. We send this truck out there immediately, we identify the bad spot, we call our contractor, it's repaired. In the old days, it would have possibly taken a week or so, and/or it could have possibly caused a blockage in a line and caused an SSO. So one other good thing about this is not only are we using it for the wastewater division, but Ted Chapman, our Streets and Stormwater Manager, had an issue in a storm culvert, and we needed to find out what was going on in it, and he got a bid for, I think, approximately $50,000. We ran our truck out there, got it done in about six hours, and there was no need to ask for $50,000, which is possibly, I think, from what I remember, one-sixth the buyback of the truck in one day. So I can't speak enough for it. Next slide. So we, from our camera, from our CCTV truck and our program that runs it, this is a picture of a, of a perfect pipe, and we wanted to give you this as a, as a reference point to what you're about to see. There's no roots, no cracks. There are no roots, no cracks. There is no sag in the line. There's no level of water, which means that it's, it doesn't have the right slope. So in this slide, you can tell that it's obviously not like the other pipe. There's about a hole in the pipe about the size of about three footballs. It's got root intrusion, it's got a sag or a water line, and basically, it's already catching some debris. And if this isn't corrected expeditiously, it will cause a blockage and an SSO. And if, you can see the date on that, the date on the bottom of that was, was the 25th of May. So this is a pipe that has more root intrusion, and if you look at the top of the pipe, there's pieces that are cracked. Eventually, those pieces fall in because of the pressure of ground, static pressure outside the pipe, falls into the pipe, and then debris catches it, and again, a blockage, and then eventually, an SSO. I was going to show you a picture of a, of a pipe totally filled with roots, but then there's really hardly anything you can see. It just looks like a gray cobweb. So basically, here's a pipe that has medium root intrusion. It's about halfway to about maybe one-quarter of the pipe, but that's what we go in to either clean it out with high-pressure water, we put a mechanical saw, or we do chemical root treatment. Those are the programs that I, that I mentioned before. So other than those programs, we have also implemented other technology to help guarantee proper system operation. We purchased and deployed nine smart meters to remote monitor previous SSO locations, and what a smart meter is, is basically it's an electronic sending unit, it's like a cellular device. It's attached underneath the manhole lid, it shoots a recognition beam at the level of sewage or the flow in the manhole, and the idea is that if there's a blockage, then the water can't get by it and it starts to raise. We have parameters set so that basically if the water gets up, we have the parameter set so that basically it goes to our pagers on our smartphones, and we can get the crew out there and we can get that line cleared before it actually creates an SSO. So we have nine of those in the, in the, in the system, and they're being monitored 24 hours a day. Along those lines, we've also installed SCADA, which is Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition. It's just a, it's just another system, pre-warning system, that is basically like the smart meters, but for the sewer pump stations that monitor the wet well levels, the pumps turning on and off, so that there's, if there's any kind of mechanical failure, it again gives us a pre-heads-up so that we can get staff out there, again, as 24 hours monitoring, so that we can, we can keep any problem from a sewer station happening. The sewer stations are really important because though you may have one main that can contribute to an amount of gallonage, you have several mains or several tributaries go into a pump station. So if a pump station goes down, it's going to be a really bad day. And then the last big change over the years, spot repairs. Over the last, over the last years, we went from repairing approximately 10 repairs a year in 2005 to now approximately 100 or more a year. In 2005, our contract repair line item was $30,000. Now it's $900,000. We're repairing portions of our sewer system at a rapid rate. Our proposed budget allows us to keep on pace for the next year, keep that pace for the next year, excuse me. I've been leading this division since 2006. We used to have one to two SSOs a week. We have never made it this far in two, a year with zero SSOs. The hard work and dedication of our staff, along with the changes and improvements I have just described, have all led to this tremendous success. Jim's going to talk a little bit more about SSOs.
Thank you, Dennis. I have to tell you that the improvements that Dennis went through pretty quickly, and if you know Dennis, that was quickly. Wouldn't be possible without the support, not only of the council, and I know that for many years, I haven't been here that many years, but for many years, you guys have struggled with the decisions and the programs that needed to take place, and that was always a tough battle. But not only support from council, but from the city manager's office and support from our great wastewater team. I believe that one of the major reasons why the wastewater division has achieved the level of success that it has is that it takes a very strong leader, someone who is passionate and energetic, who's willing to actually lead and drive the changes necessary. It's one thing to come up in a meeting and come up with ideas about what we can do. It takes something else to lead a crew, especially if a crew's been sort of ingrained with some of the practices over the years. I can't say enough about what it took for the organization to make that change, not only with the funding necessary, necessary to do it, but with the leadership. And I'm very proud of Dennis, and I'm very proud of the crew, and I want you to know that, that they, they do a very good job every single day. And it takes someone that can apply that passion, energy, to take on the new technology, the new equipment, challenge, challenge those old practices and work with our crews, like I said, to make reasonable adjustments that empower others to be successful. And that, I can't say enough about what's occurred. One of the biggest improvements, again, is the cultural, the culture that has changed. Tonight, we had planned on having two crew members here, Phil Wolfenden, who's our lead worker, and Scott McKenzie, who does quite a bit of work out in the field, not only with sewer laterals, but also a wide range of things. And in talking to both of them, I know that Scott had told me for years, when I first got here, he said, "You know, for years, we would drive around and just dump water down manholes because that's all we knew how to do. We didn't have the right equipment. We had to get things flowing." And with the combination of the CIP improvements that Jimmy Tann talked a little bit about one pump station, but CIP improvements and the adjustments to the operation and the addition to equipment and some of the spot repairs that Dennis briefly spoke of, has allowed the crew to be more proactive, to sort of adjust as they go when they learn more, they can educate themselves, and they're really excited about it, and the numbers prove that out. Moving away from the reactionary practices of old to a more sustainable, efficient, proactive way to do business is not an easy transition, but like I said, one that Dennis, Dennis and the crew have worked very hard to do. As Dennis explained, the many advancements have led to reductions in SSOs, and I'll talk a little bit about those. Looking at the numbers in particular, if I can make this come up, in particular, in the year 2010, 2011, you can see there's quite a significant change from 36 SSOs down to 15. That was when many of the maintenance practices began to sort of kick in and take place, when that proactive approach began to be more ingrained in the, in the team, along with those improvements in the CIP and maintenance practices. It wasn't one thing, it was a combination of many things happening all at the same Lost my way here. Recently, with our aggressive spot repair and now with the CCTV, we have thus far been able to keep our SSOs down to a small number, that small number being zero. And as the city manager mentioned, the Baykeeper was not only impressed with that, but it was, it hasn't been my experience that you sit in a room with five attorneys and they're complimentary and they congratulate the city. It wasn't what I was expected, expecting, and I don't know if Dennis has calmed down since then, but out of that, out of that has come not only a lot of pride, but also a lot of recognition in what we're doing is, is working and other people are noticing, and, and that's exciting for us. So I wanted to show you the SSOs as overlaid with our consent decree requirements. So in the red, those are the, those are our SSO limits. And again, SSOs are sanitary sewer overflows. That's sewage going outside the system to places we don't want it to, just so people So I wanted to show you that because we're at zero, our, our limit is eight. We never know, Dennis knocks on wood every day and crosses himself, but we never know when we're going to have an SSO, but the, one of the questions was, will your SSOs low because we had a drought? And I would say yes and no. We had less of an opportunity for infiltration into our system, but we also had some really big storm events, as you know, and we weathered those storms fairly well. The early warning systems, as Dennis described, our SCADA system and our, our smart covers gave us the warnings that we needed. We were able to get out and make some adjustments. We've also encountered a lot of root problems. Dennis will talk about those. Related to the drought, we think, other agencies are having them as well. The roots are going deeper and getting to laterals and into the mains. But I wanted to show you those requirements to show you where we are at with that. One of the ways we've been able to keep improving our practices and being efficient is to look for new methods, new products, and new technology that will help our, do our job better, more efficiently, and so forth. And so I wanted to share with you for a couple of minutes, an award that the City of San Bruno, especially, and in particular, the wastewater division, received from the U.S. Green Building Council. This award recognizes the wastewater division's use of an innovative and environmentally safe product to keep our pump stations and wet wells in good operating order, if I can get this to work. Maybe Dennis can fill a little time here while I make this thing work. Never mind, never mind, Dennis.
The BioAm is an automated biological delivery system. What that means is it produces bacteria that are able to consume fats, oils, and grease in wastewater. How it works is the BioAm starts with a dry culture of 32 grams of bacteria. The three main things that bacteria truly need, which are food, air, and water. When we provide those nutrients to them, they're able to grow and thrive and become alive. The BioAm produces these bacteria and mixes them over a 24-hour period, and then automatically doses them into a wastewater system. After a 24-hour period of growth, you get to about 30 trillion bacteria. It is incredible in the amount of fat, oils, and grease that this bacteria can digest and then in turn turn them into CO2 and water. And these bacteria are incredibly great because they're renewable. Bacteria aren't going anywhere. They've been around for millions of years. When all of us are gone, they'll still, they'll still be around. So the bacteria provide us with a green or sustainable approach to help remove one of the larger problems these cities are facing. This machine operates automatically, doesn't need someone to go press go or any hands-on maintenance required from any of the staff. It's truly a hands-free piece of equipment. It will reduce the need and sometimes eliminate the need to have these large pumper trucks come and evacuate or suck out all of the contents of these lift stations. Generally, that needs to occur on a frequent basis based, based upon the amount of grease that builds up in there. If we can reduce the amount of grease that builds up in there, we can reduce the amount of routine maintenance that needs to occur. The United States Green Building Council is an organization that's made up of environmentalists, builders, nonprofit organizations, that all share the same interest in creating a sustainable community going forward.
And what happens is the U.S. Green Building Council, they look at all these green products and technology, and they first of all see which of these green products work, first of all. And then they then decide, okay, what are the byproducts of these green products and technology? So the City of San Bruno is receiving this award because the BioAm is proprietary and a patented technology for wastewater applications. Therefore, all of our clients, like the City of San Bruno, are recognized for their sustainability achievement for use of the BioAm. And what this means is that the City of San Bruno should be very proud that they've addressed several factors that are important to the U.S. Green Building Council, one of them being workplace hazard reduction. And what this is, is that instead of using traditional products in the lift station like acids, caustics, solvents, which can be very harmful to city employees in contact with it, we're using the BioAm, which has naturally occurring bacteria, therefore eliminating the potential risk of any employees being in contact with the traditional products. And then other factor that the City of San Bruno has addressed is reducing their waste stream. And the BioAm has done this by providing a product that comes in a container about this size that's recyclable, and one dosing of the BioAm is equivalent to five 55-gallon drums of liquid product every single day. So instead of shipping drums and drums of chemicals and storing them in the yard or at the lift station, we are reducing our carbon footprint by using the BioAm instead.
Thank you for your patience on that. In a nutshell, we don't have to clean the pump station as often. People don't have to go in where it's not so hospitable and do the kind of work that you can imagine they don't want to do. And again, it's sustainable, and it's, who would have thought that the wastewater division would, would be in a position to have a, a green sort of label attached to it? It's sort of counterintuitive. So kind of moving on through our presentation, the point-of-sale program, I wanted to remind the council that that's been going on since May 8th last year. It was part of the Baykeeper Consent Decree. It was approved in January of '14, and again, it went into effect May 8th. Dennis is going to talk a little bit about what we've been doing and the results of our inspections so far.
So to date, as you can see, we're up to 235 inspections, 176 have failed, 75% failure rate. And most realtors and citizens understand the process. Feedbacks, feedback from realtors regarding the process has been overwhelmingly good. It wasn't something that they, that they weren't used to, and other towns had implemented it three years before us. So once they, they knew that we were doing it, they said, "I, everybody does it a little bit different, but you guys are pretty much on par with everybody else." So they understood. The one thing that really came out of the point-of-sale program that we didn't really identify at first is these repairs that, that are being done on the private side and on the, and out underneath the sidewalk and street, they're, they're helping to lower our SSO numbers. Many times, we would find, and I, this is the only way I can describe it, root masses in a, in a six-inch main, you, you can tell the characteristics of it. Four-inch pipes come from houses. When you get a root mass out of a four-inch pipe, it's a lot smaller. A lot of times, and in fact, the last three months, we found two mains surcharged or backed up per se, not overflowing, but once we cleaned them, we found out that they were root masses pushed down the line from plumbers. So all of the, all of these 176 pipes that have been repaired, whether they're due to be roots or pieces of pipe, you know, structural failures, are, are occurrences that could have produced and have produced objects getting into our system that then would, would cause our system to fail, and then we would have an SSO. So in a sense, not only is it helping for, you know, not getting groundwater in, it's keeping the roots from getting into our system. So overall, it's, it's been a, it's been a very good thing.
And to add to that, when we met with the Baykeeper, one of the discussions we had was our Sharp Park SEP program, which we've been to the council before and discussed. It hasn't been very successful. We've, even though we've done some outreach to the public, we've had limited results. And in our discussions with the Baykeeper, we've talked about the point-of-sale program and and because we've got clear evidence that there are issues associated with laterals that are more than 50 years old, because we've got a program that's here a little more than a year old, they've agreed or suggested that they would, on our behalf, lobby, if for my word, not theirs, the water board for an adjustment for the Sharp Park program to perhaps go citywide with our Sharp Park program, our lateral grant program that we have that's not very successful in Sharp Park, but using this as a guide, maybe take that citywide and adjust the program. So staff's been in conversations with not only the water board, but the baykeeper to set up a meeting and been working on some adjustments in language for that program. And while we're optimistic, we're sort of conservatively optimistic, let's say. So the point-of-sale program, as Dennis said, brought some, I think, over time, it's making some improvements with root removal, but also, it might spawn our savings for the Sharp Park program, so stay tuned for more of that. And then finally, I wanted to just talk a little bit about our sewer lateral warranty program partnership with Service Line Warranties. Letters went out this week. I have fielded almost 20 calls myself, and I know that utility billing, city manager's office, engineering, and others have also talked to folks, and overwhelmingly positive response, mostly it's, is this real, is this a scam, is one of the frequent questions. The other questions are just, you know, how does it work, what is the program, and we've got frequently asked questions in the back. We've also forwarded people the phone numbers if they didn't have it already, encouraged them to talk to the company directly. So that's moving forward, and so far, we've got some pretty good, I think, over 60 or 70 phone calls, near as I can count. And with that, we're available for any questions.
Any questions for Jim and the team? This is, you should all be complimented. I know, you know, you talked about us struggling with the financial end of it too, and we made the decision, but the fact that the money's out there, it's got to be used properly, and you certainly have done that. It's a big drop in SSOs, a drop, I mean, to zero. How much more can you go? So it's a wonderful program, and it really is a compliment to everyone, you know, in the infrastructure end of all of this. To what you've done has been extraordinary, you know. So I want to congratulate you and all of the staff and members of the different divisions that are involved in this. Please pass that on. Anyone else? Irene?
Oh, thank you. I was looking at the budget, and I didn't notice, did you need any more grinders? If they do that great a job and keep our people out from having to fix things like, as you said earlier, should we put some more out there?
I think the council's been very supportive, as I've said, and Jimmy Tann, our Public Services Director, not only has plans in place, but he listens to Dennis. He seems mild and quiet here, but believe me when I tell you that not only does Jimmy solicit comments and incorporates those, but it's a really team effort. So the newly designed pump stations are clearly a collaborative effort, and Olympic Pump Station's an example of that.
So you don't need any new grinders?
Well, no, they're now designed into the pump stations.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Great. Go ahead, Marty.
Great job. Few questions. For the video truck, I think you just recently got it, since when? Just curious.
We received it New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve, nice. So you're required to video pretty much the majority of the city by baykeeper's decree or agreement?
We are required to revisit or video every line segment or every pipe once every five years.
Okay. And where do you think, what's your production rate? Is that video truck being utilized every single day?
Approximately four days a week.
Four days a week, and approximately, how many feet per day are you getting?
It just depends on if we run into a problem, but what we are on, we're about between 14 and 18 line segments a week.
Okay. So those questions are, as we go into our budget study session after this meeting, of finding out, are we on target? Do we need to, are we need to, you know, press on the gas to do more of the video, being that there's approximately 18 miles of sewer main in San Bruno?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yes, okay. One of the next steps within the CMMS is basically, we're going to install, much like the cleaning programs, we're going to install the revisiting or recleaning, or actually, in this case, the re-inspection. So we're, I'm currently working on that right now, so that, like I said, every line segment will be put on a reoccurring basis, so it's just going to keep going.
Okay.
Almost forever.
For the spot repairs of 100, almost $900,000, is that subcontracted out, or is that work done by our staff?
That's mostly contracted out. Yeah.
And approximately, how much money has this Bio-Amp saved? I mean, what do you think? I mean, how expensive is that bacteria? I mean, where is?
The bacteria is $386 a month, and I would say that depending on, it's an equational issue in the sense of how often the grease gets formed in that one station. We only have it in one station.
Okay.
And we're monitoring Olympic to see whether it'd be beneficial or not, but when you put in two staff members in a truck for, let's say, maybe an hour, you know, and depending on, if in the winter months, it churns up, so it maybe didn't necessarily at the station, it has its benefit, but there's also the residual effect. I mean, once the bacteria gets in the pump station, and once it's pumped, it goes down the rest of the system, and it keeps eating all of the bad stuff. So whether it be in the station or whether it be in the collection system downstream, we're seeing a benefit to it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Well, this is just an oral report, there's no action. We want to thank you very much, and once again, congratulations on a job well done.